I'd like to call this meeting of the Concord Select Board to order on May 16th. And let's start off with the consent agenda.
Okay, move to approve the consent calendar as shown in the revised agenda. Except there are only two one-day special liquor licenses that we're going to be approving tonight for the Umbrella Arts Center at 40 Stowe Street, May 22nd from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and May 24th from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., and they are for wine and malt.
Thank you, and I would like to offer one amendment, which was in the minutes of May 9th, under the appointments, that the appointment reflect the term to end, that it was a reappointment, first of all, and that the term would end April 30th, 2025.
Good, and actually, there's a second amendment I want to offer on the minutes. In my liaison report, I had announced that the Chair of the Finance Committee is Peggy Briggs.
Yeah, I also have an amendment or a comment about the minutes. I think when we were talking about the goals, we were talking, specifically when we were talking about reviewing ARPA spending, I think we discussed that ARPA spending would be approved at town meeting. Didn't we agree to that?
Subject to appropriation, that was, I think, what's subject to the normal appropriation process.
The, so also, I think that we said with the exception of the items for FY '23, because they, clearly, the FY '23 budget and spending items have already been set, and that the town manager would be bringing forward a couple of spending items for ARPA.
Okay, we can talk about this later, but I thought that's what I heard that night.
That's the general principle, but the FY '23 is different.
It's an exception.
But if we're not careful, the money will all be gone by FY '23.
That won't happen.
Okay, so that, there's no amendment due to that, that was just really a question?
It was a confusion on my part.
Okay, all right. So, do I have a second on the consent agenda as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. And now, I think we are ready for the town manager's report.
Thank you. There is a copy of the report in your packet. It was maybe a little bit less information than you've seen in prior weeks, so I have some other items that I wanted to add. The drop-off event was this past Saturday. We had 750 participants.
Including me.
Including you, at your scheduled time.
Indeed, I arrived on the minute.
Okay, very good. I wanted to mention to you that on Thursday this week, the senior management team will be having our monthly meeting, and the topic for this month is a review of the fleet electrification study and EV charging infrastructure study. I'm not sure that we've talked about this before, so we have a final draft of the report. We will be going through that report and, and talking about electric vehicles going forward. So, the different charging facilities or infrastructure that is needed over time, and the types of vehicles. So, the study found that one-third of our fleet is ripe for electrification, so essentially, anything that's light-duty vehicles and light-duty trucks. So, we'll be talking about that, and when the report is final, we'll have that available to share with members of the public.
Carrie, is that for town and school, or just town?
So, it is for town and school. The school did participate.
Including the region?
Um, I would assume so, but I don't know off the top of my head. There definitely was participation. John Arena participated on behalf of the school. So, I also wanted to mention that the light plant staff will be making permanent repairs to the switchgear at Emerson Hospital. To do so, the staff has coordinated and scheduled an outage with the hospital, which will occur overnight tonight, and during the outage, the team will isolate damaged equipment. Once that is complete, the power will be restored, and then the repairs will be made, and then there will be a second scheduled outage to bring the new equipment online. So, that is, I know we've talked about the switchgear at Emerson Hospital here, one of the significant outages that we had probably a couple of months ago now. And then, the last thing that I wanted to mention, well, actually, second to last, is the first of two open houses at the main library is happening this Saturday, the 21st, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There are also events at the Fowler Branch, including the dedication of the mural, and events to tie into the spring into West Concord Junction Day, which is 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. this Saturday. And then, the final item that I will mention is just about the compost site. So, I've sent you a couple of pieces of information over the last couple of weeks. You know that a couple of weeks ago, that CPW was contacted by a concerned citizen who had done some independent testing of some compost material that he picked up and was concerned about lead. As a result, we reached out to our consultant and to DEP to review our management of compost with them, to see if they had any recommendations, and what testing they may suggest. Both suggested that we should not be doing any additional testing. During this time, we had closed the compost facility for a week. It's open on Wednesdays and Saturdays, so it was closed for a week, and it was reopened again for this past Saturday. But I did let you know that on Friday, we had somebody posting, who posted a sign at the compost facility, again, concerned about potential contaminants. And I guess all I can say is that we have reached out to the DEP and our consultant, and we are following the protocol, any protocol that they set forth for us. And it's completely voluntary to use the compost, but at this time, we have not been advised that we need to take any additional actions, or do anything other than what we've been doing to manage that facility.
Okay, any questions for the town manager?
Carrie, will we, I assume we'll get a copy of whatever's going to be posted outside regarding that?
I think there was a photo with the town, the town manager report.
Yeah, not the message that was left, but didn't you say there was going to be a pamphlet or something that would be available?
A pamphlet, yes, and I can get that to you.
Okay, great. And then, the second thing I just want to ask about that was in your town manager's report, the numbers reported for response, response calls by the police department was in the thousand level, and I, you know, I know that people were away on training and some other things. I was just curious, that number was exceptionally high?
Yeah, I can follow up with the chief and, and get some additional information to you. We had talked last meeting about, I don't know if it's every other meeting, at least once a month, to have a department manager come and make a presentation on the department, and I believe the police chief is second in line, only because there are a number of public works issues that I know that you're interested in. And, but I'll get some information on that to, maybe to put some color to that number.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, now, for the chair's report, and my very first chair's report, and unfortunately, it will consist of three apologies and explanations. So, the first apology is to anyone who is surprised that we are having a meeting tonight. We did not initially schedule a meeting for tonight, and did post a meeting last Thursday, and the reason for that is that it turns out that we have a very large number of pending administrative items, including eight grant of location petitions that are coming up for National Grid, and a number of pretty time-critical items that we'll be discussing tonight related to interests for our businesses in town. And so, partially in the interest of being business-friendly, one of our themes for this year, but also, I think, to not derail our overall schedule, I suggested that we have an additional meeting now to kind of help clear the decks of those backlog items. And so, very soon after we posted a annual schedule, we're adding another meeting. It does happen. The second apology is about the time of tonight's meeting. As many of you know, our usual meeting time is 6:30 p.m., and tonight's meeting is at 7:00 p.m., and someone may have tried to log in early and wondered why we weren't here. And that is because, due to clerical error, the agenda last week was not posted until 6:52 p.m., and rather than start at 6:52 p.m., because we need that, that 48 business hours ahead, I suggested, well, we decided to start at 7:00. The third apology is with regard to something that I said last week, and it was basically only a couple of minutes after I was made chair, I was nominating Terry Ackerman as the clerk, and in my nomination, I mentioned the advantage that I saw and the hope that I had for getting her guidance in the, really, understanding the role and responsibility of the chair and the specific, in addition to the general coordination of our agendas, which of course happens between the chair and the clerk on a weekly basis. And that apparently disconcerted some folks who, or at least someone who then sent a letter to the Division of Government, asking whether this was in essence forming a subcommittee and potentially getting in the way of other select board members, you know, consulting with me as chair about issues before the board. And I just want to clarify that, you know, the objective here is not for me to consult with any individual member of the board on a special basis around the items that are before the board, that any member of the board can consult with me, and of course, following the provisions of Open Meeting Law, will seek not to create a deliberation among, you know, a quorum of the board, either at the same time or serially, I think we're all very familiar with these rules. It's really about me as a newbie chair, trying to understand what I should be doing each week procedurally. So, I hope that that clarifies things, and I, sometimes I, in the, actually, the hope to be transparent, maybe I talk too much, including just now.
Can, can, future agendas, oh, so, can we put an item near the top for apologies?
I think chair, I think we should just reterm it, Chair's Apology, you know, because...
This is like, this is like somebody starting a long speech by saying, "I will be brief."
I will be brief. Well, yeah, I think I probably set some sort of record in the, in the Office of Open Government after two minutes of being chair to trigger a letter. It's not one I'm proud of, and I hope to change that. Okay, unless there is any further discussion or questions on that.
Could I make one or two little comments based on the minutes, which is not a correction of the minutes, but some observations?
I would say it would have been better at where we were discussing them at the consent agenda.
Right, all right, well, then we'll...
So, let's, let's move on if we can. The next item is to talk with our town moderator, Carmen Reese, a debrief about town meeting, and I would like to invite the town moderator to join us at the table.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Carmen Reese, Town Moderator. Good evening, Select Board, Town Manager. So, I'll give you a little recap. I know you were all there.
Not me.
Ah, yes, I'll give you, in spirit, I'm sure you were.
I was, in spirit.
Yes. On May 1st, we had 644 voters. On May 2nd, we had 725 voters, and between the two nights, we had 910 voters who came for one or two nights. Generally, the logistics went well. The COVID measures were well-accepted by the public, and people sorted themselves into areas where they wished to be masked and areas where masks were optional comfortably. The use of the auditorium in the gym went pretty smoothly from our perspective and from the perspective of those I spoke with. We did have a few glitches. We ran out of time with the printer to have the FinCom report printed with the result that we had to sacrifice, including the warrant, inside the Finance Committee report to make the job shorter, and that came as something of a surprise to voters who expect every year to see the warrant reprinted inside the Finance Committee report, so they only need the one document, since so many of our articles are moved as printed in the warrant. And unfortunately, together with that, we didn't have enough extra warrants to be able to distribute those at town meeting. On the second night of town meeting, we solved that problem by reprinting the sections of the warrant, the articles in the warrant, which were being moved as printed in the The microphones didn't have any numbers on them for the moderator or the deputy moderator to see. We'll fix that next year. There was a slight delay, which many of you may have noticed in getting the PowerPoint slides up onto the screen, and that was a technology issue which has been identified and will be solved for next year. The location of the timer on the screen earned us some comments from a few people, because it was strategically placed over the total line on some of the, on some of the slides, making it difficult for people to read the important information there. That's another thing that should be easily enough fixed next year. We also had a small glitch in the distribution of hearing assistance devices. It turned out that they were all distributed at the same table, but they needed to be calibrated and tuned differently for the auditorium versus the gymnasium, and the result was that some people picked up those hearing assistance devices and found that they didn't work in the room that they went to. That got straightened out, and there was no problem with that on Monday. Voter comments, we didn't do a, an exit survey this year. My feeling was that we're still in weird COVID times, and so, whatever, it wasn't really going to be feedback on a normal town meeting that we could use for the future. But we did have a lot of comments. There was, I had one comment wondering, "Why can't we have pro and con microphones?", and I can tell you that historically, voters have been evenly divided on that. Some people hate them, some people like having them, about evenly, 50/50, and whenever we do have the pro and con microphones, inevitably, people get confused about which microphone they're standing at, and you will have a person at a con microphone who is speaking in support and vice versa, and that leads to enormous frustration, so we just didn't do them this year. The usual comments on people feeling frustrated that they didn't know when the articles that they particularly cared about would be coming up, but we never do. We take the articles in the order in which they appear in the warrant, and I can give people best guesses on how long we'll take and get there, but I can easily be wrong. So, I don't know, you know, there are some town meetings that actually put the numbers in a hat of the warrant articles and take things up in the order in which the numbers are pulled from the hat, so, I mean, there's a lot of ways to do this. But we typically take things up in the order in which they're in the warrant, and that gives people some basis for expectation. Had some comments from folks that they came on Sunday in hopes of participating in and voting on an article that they hoped would come up on Sunday, and then it didn't come up until Monday, and then getting childcare at the last minute on Monday night for small children who couldn't be at the high school because they need to go to bed before the meeting is over. Some frustration expressed about that. Also heard some parents of small children in particular suggesting that Sunday afternoon is a preferable time to them for town meeting to weeknight evenings. And incidentally, I've had that conversation with staff as well on whether the Sunday afternoon is tougher on them than the weekday evening, and on balance, they're probably mostly in favor of the Sunday afternoon, because you, you have more hours that you, you know, you limit the number of weekday nights. So, if it's a long Sunday afternoon and one weekday night, they prefer that to being out late, three weekday nights after a full workday. I received comments about presenters being over their time limits a lot, and I'll take some share and responsibility for that. So, lessons for next year. We have to do a better job on scheduling, communicating the schedules, and enforcing the schedules. So, we, you know, some of the glitches we had this year, like, for example, the Finance Committee report not including the warrant, it was a result of there being unclear communication about what the deadline was for getting things into the printer for the Finance Committee report. So, we need to do better with that. Same thing with the speaking time limits, a better job of determining those in advance, making sure that people rehearse them, making sure that people get to me if they really can't stay within their time limit, because it's much better to negotiate with me for an extra minute than it is to just run right over your clock, and then to have people who are speakers from the floor being shut down unceremoniously at the end of their two minutes. So, that's, that feels unfair to people, and I understand that. So, we'll do better with that. The availability of childcare and accessibility aids was not printed in the warrant this year, and that meant that there were a lot of phone calls to the town manager's office wanting to know, "Is there childcare? How do I take advantage of that?" So, historically, that...
Just an oversight? Was it just an oversight?
Yeah, I think it was an oversight. You know, one of the issues that we have is that we've had, we've had some turnover in town staff, as you know, and the, Chris Carmody, who's been the town meeting coordinator, this was his first indoor town meeting. So, it was his first not-weird-COVID experience. And some of the things that have been routine for us in the past have been lost out of our routine, because we've just been making stuff up as we go along, trying to figure out how to cope with COVID. So, I know we'll have a new person in Chris's position for next year, and to that end, I have, I don't know if you've seen it yet, but I've sent all of you a memo on scheduling town meeting and the town elections. It's five pages of scheduling information, okay?
I noted that...
All right, it's, and, and it's just, just, it's a brain dump on all the stuff that you have to think about in advance, and the ways in which all these pieces interlock, and the ways in which they have to flow for it all to work. And some of that, I think, has been lost because of the way we've been doing things over the past couple of years, and because of the staff turnover. And so, my effort was to get it all on a piece of paper for our next staff person, for you all, so you know what you need to be doing and when you need to be doing it in order for it all to work and flow easily. And so, staff that is part of this process knows as well. And both the town clerk and Chris Carmody had, have reviewed that memo and put their two cents' worth in there, so it's, it's a product of the three of us from those three perspectives. And as I mentioned in the email with which I sent the memo to you all, "When you get to talking about the schedule for next year, I'm delighted to return and talk with you about any of that." And so, it's not my intention to, I know, next year's schedule is not on your agenda tonight, so it's not my intention to talk about what's in that memo, but you have it for context for this discussion and for that discussion when you get to it.
After reviewing that memo, I thought, "We're already late to get started for next year." It just seems like so many items.
That is part of the issue, is that, you know, as you know, I was on the Select Board for six years, and the first meeting after town meeting, we would have a proposed schedule from the town manager's office for the next year's town meeting. And just to set those dates, to know when town meeting would be, to know when the warrant was going to open and close, to let the school know when we need their building, because they're also planning a year in advance for graduation...
There's actually no reason to delay.
Right, right. And, and all those other things that can move, that are things that go on the staff calendar, but when this meeting will be, or when that, you know, that stuff can move around a little bit, and it doesn't need to be part of the public calendar, and you don't have to decide that in May of the preceding year. But the big pieces, it's great if you can get those locked down as early as, as possible.
So, since this is already the second meeting after town meeting, I'm not, I guess it wasn't a joke that we're already late. Okay.
But it's okay, there's still, you know...
You can apologize for that.
Yeah. But, you know, the other issue is that every board and committee in town is calibrating itself to that schedule. You know, the CPC needs to know, okay, because they're backing up from town meeting to know when they need to set the deadlines for applications, for grants from the CPC, any board or committee that is looking at a proposal for an article for the warrant needs to be thinking that through the planning board, they need to know. So, there, there is a lot for, for people to work through. And then, there are things that are hard for us to get in advance. So, for example, we didn't have a stenographer to do closed captioning on Monday night, because we didn't ask her early enough, and, and she was not available, and we couldn't get anywhere else, anyone else. It didn't happen this year, but there have been prior years when we couldn't get any chairs, because all the rental chairs were taken, because it was town meeting season, and, you know. We got one bid this year for audiovisual services, because that's who was left, of vendors who wasn't already booked, because we waited to put that bid out there. And during COVID in the past two years, hmm, you know, everything was loose, and people didn't know what they were doing, and, you know, maybe they weren't having town meetings, maybe they were delaying them, maybe they were doing outside and not having vendors. So, it was pretty easy to get what you needed, but we're going back to the regular rule where if you want stuff, you have to book it, and you have to book it really far in advance.
So, do you have more in your report?
Just a couple more things. So, okay, using both the auditorium and the gym, I worked really well, and I'd be in favor of us continuing to do that, because we easily accommodate the larger numbers of people who come without having to worry about opening an overflow area, and it gives people a choice. There have been many people who've complained bitterly about sitting on hard chairs in the gym when there's comfortable chairs in the auditorium, and other people who are very worried about the steep pitch of the auditorium for people who want to get up and speak. So, people can self-select and sit where it's comfortable for them if we use those spaces, and it seemed to work pretty seamlessly to do that from a technology perspective and from the moderator and deputy moderator perspective, and from the voter's perspective. We'll fix our technology issues with the PowerPoint delay and the timer. We have, this year, and in the last indoor meetings that we did, we changed the ratio of stuff we rented to stuff that we rounded up in town to run town meeting. You know, it used to be that, you know, we need a podium, so someone would go find one of those at the Willard School and find another one somewhere, and so, we would have stacked...
And so we would have staff driving around town to pick up stuff from various places, and then after town meeting, they got to bring it all back. So at this point, we're renting all that stuff, and then it just shows up on the truck, and it's in the building. And it has cut dramatically how long it takes staff to set up for the meeting, and then we aren't missing things at the last minute. So it seems to be a good distribution. It seems to be a good, we've got it right, I think, on the cost benefit analysis on that. For next year, I'd consider retaining that Sunday start. It's worth thinking about. We did have a counted vote on Sunday and a counted vote on Monday. Together, those counted votes cost us a half an hour. We'd have saved that half an hour if we did electronic voting. We did an experiment with electronic voting. People were kind of lukewarm about it, but, so I'm not going to move that forward. If anybody wants to re-explore electronic voting, somebody can let me know that, and we can explore it again. Consent calendar seemed about right. The May schedule, perhaps not ideal. That first week of May is a little harder on the high school. We ended up with that orchestra pit being down. That turns out to be a 12-hour exercise to make the orchestra pit into a next orchestra pit. There's like, I don't know, 40 different large, heavy pieces that have to be manually moved. So once they do that for the play, they aren't going to put it back for town meeting and then take it away again for the play. So we had this big chasm that we really hoped the deputy moderator wouldn't fall in during the, during, and we put up stanchions and so forth, but it meant she was far away from the audience. And so, you know, just, May might not be ideal. Back to April, probably better. Longer term, and this is, and I'm just wrapping up here. There are three things that we should be thinking about kind of longer term for town meeting, I think. And the first is, I have learned that in other towns, they, they do have closed captioning on their local access cable channels. That can be accomplished if you buy the equipment necessary to do that. Milton has done it. That enables them not only to close caption town meeting, but every meeting they broadcast on local access and every, and every meeting that they livestream to, I think the same thing. So MMN is researching that right now to see whether that equipment would work with what we have and what it would cost. And it's certainly my hope that it's something that we could do rather than hiring the stenographer. And, you know, it's expensive to have the stenographer. I can't, I can't recall exactly what it costs, but we only had the one stenographer. She was only in the gymnasium, so people in the auditorium did not have closed captioning. It requires the rental of additional screens and the setting up of that and so forth. And how much easier would it be just to have that caption running along the bottom of the screen? So something to think about. We also are at a point now where we should really be thinking about whether there's any kind of permanent improvements we should make in the gymnasium for town meetings so that we can rent less stuff. There's conduit that was placed in the building to the gym that would allow us to wire the gym for audiovisual. It wasn't done at the time the building was built because we weren't sure how we were going to build the building. The thing that was really important was making sure you had the conduit there so you can easily pull the wires, and that was done. But we know how we use the building now. And we could easily put up two dropdown screens and figure out how to put a projector in there. Might be useful to the high school as well as to us. And it seems to me that it would be worth investigating what that capital cost would be and weighing it against how much we spend every year to rent all this stuff. Because it is easy. For example, we've got a screen and a, and projectors already in the auditorium, so we don't have to do anything for that feed. You know, it's just there. We don't have to do any wiring for that. And it's really easy for us to use that space. It would be nice if the gym were equally easy. And then finally, another thing that I heard from a lot of citizens, and maybe you all are hearing it too, is people question whether the 750 people that show up at, at town meeting for a particular article on a particular night are truly representative of the way the 12,500 voters in the town- that. The only real indication we have is on Proposition 2 and 1/2 votes where there's an exclusion, dead exclusion vote that has to happen after town meeting at the ballot, at the ballot box. And in general, those votes have come out the same for us, which suggests that it's probably the same. But both the 1995 town meeting study report and the more recent Town Governance Study Committee report suggested that the select board think about whether you'd like to create, and I think it would require home rule legislation, but whether you'd like to create some kind of mechanism for designating certain articles which are of perhaps very high public interest for a subsequent vote after town meeting at the polls. And so I just bring up that recommendation from those two studies and invite you to consider dusting it off and thinking about it. And now I am done.
Okay, questions from the board. Terry, I think I saw you first.
Okay, I have a number of comments. So first of all, Carmen, spectacular job, as you've done every year. And I've known quite a few moderators in my day, and beyond, without a doubt, you are the most hardworking. You, it's a year-round job. I don't think anybody realizes. The moderator does not come in the week before town meeting. Carmen works on this 12 months a year, and it, and it shows. So yeah, there's some glitches, but it basically is excellent. My next comment is, in terms of communications, I do agree that we had some glitches this year. I think that one of the issues was that Chris Carmody was also filling in for Jeremy and Robin, and so he was-
Only so many jobs one human being can do.
Exactly. And I'm really looking forward this year with our new guy, Mike Givens. He's a great communicator. I think we're going to do really well this year with that. And Carmen, I really appreciate you putting out that, that whole schedule memo. I wish I had had that last year. It's really, really helpful. And the one thing that I might want to add to it would be that this year, we added the three meetings for the Capitol Plan in the fall. Since it's basically a 12-month calendar now, you've got CPC stuff on. So I would say perhaps we should put also those Capitol meetings onto that calendar when we do it. Also involving the calendar, I've heard that there's a possible special town meeting that we're going to need in the fall. And so that kind of figures into the thinking about, you know, do, do we do both calendars or whatever? So, and then I'm, I am a big fan of the Sunday afternoon. I think that's working really well. And finally, I'm not a fan of accommodating, I guess, special interests. There are people who come to town meeting for one article, and then they leave, and they're upset.
And they make a lot of noise when they leave.
Yeah, and a lot of noise before that. But basically, you know, town meeting is about all of the issues in town. And, you know, that's just good citizenship, really. And if, if you don't want to do that, okay. But I don't think we're under an obligation that we have to provide a specific time to accommodate special interests. So I don't think we should feel guilty about that at all. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Linda, were you first? I, my peripheral vision first caught Mary.
I'll go first. First, I agree with what Terry just said. I like the pull the articles out of the hat idea, actually. Keep people guessing. But the point I want to make is, for me, one of the most moving things that happens at town meeting is when you talk to the audience and give them the rules of conduct, as far as, you know, no clapping, no booing, address your comments to the moderator. And you remind us that we're a legislative body, and I think that's great. So my question is, is that peculiar to Concord? That's my first question. And have you, do you have any knowledge of towns using that rule of conduct for other town meetings or other town, other committee meetings?
Town meeting is unique because we do sit as a legislature in town meeting. So I don't think that there's any other type of meeting that you could give that, that specific exhortation to other than town meeting. The rules of conduct, I, I do think it's totally appropriate for the chair of any committee to start off a committee meeting letting folks know that we will be civil here and, you know, we will hear everybody's view. We will respect everybody's view. And by the way, clapping means you don't respect someone else's view, and we don't want anyone to feel that way. So I, that's totally appropriate. And, and yes, I do think that moderators in other towns, as you, I'm part of the Mass Moderators Association, and, and there's a lot of conversation about these kinds of, of opening remarks. And different towns do things different ways. Some towns have the Pledge of Allegiance, some towns have a song, so, you know, there are a lot of, some towns have a prayer. But almost every town has opening remarks from the moderator about how we will conduct the meeting. So I, I don't think that's unique to us. I will say, though, that I, I think that Concord people are, in general, just right up there in the 95th, 98th, 99th percentile on the seriousness with which we take town meeting and the respect with which we treat each other at town meeting. And it makes it a pleasure to preside over this town meeting and a pleasure to be part of this town. And that's not true in every community. So we should feel blessed by that.
Linda.
Thank you, Carmen, for the job you did at town meeting. And also, I found that document you produced and sent to us today very helpful. There, there was actually one or two things in there that I wasn't familiar with, and so that was, that was great. This is a related question, since you mentioned the town moderators group, the other outside group. Do, have we heard any recent information on whether or not we're going to be able to continue via Zoom for our meetings? How that's going?
So, uh-
I got a whole two months to decide.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, sometimes there's a buzz, however.
We'll hear on July 16th, I'm pretty sure.
Well, it doesn't apply to open town meeting, okay? So, but with respect to ordinary meetings, I can tell you that I did take the opportunity during the Patriot State Parade to bend the ear of our state senator on this particular topic because I will say that the ability to participate remotely has made life much easier for members of the Finance Committee, many of whom hold down full-time jobs and many of whom have gone back to work in the city, you know, at this point in the COVID pandemic. And to the extent we keep that remote participation and actually even expand it for committees like the Finance Committee who have 15 people, we have a lot of strict rules about how many people can be remote. That's a good thing, it's a good thing for democracy because more people have participated as watchers. And it's a good thing for our ability to recruit people to serve on these committees. So I would heartily endorse the select board lobbying with our legislators to keep that rule so that we can continue to use it. With respect to remote voting at open town meeting, the legislature did permit it for representative town meetings, and that's a different situation because you know who, you know who the representatives are. In almost no case do you have more than 250 of them, so it's manageable. And you can solve the problems of security and identification with that many people. When you have a much larger group, it's, it's much more challenging. That said, the town of Wayland is pushing forward with a, a home rule petition to get the legislator, legislature to allow them to experiment with remote participation in open town meeting. So it will be interesting to see what happens with that, if anything. And I can tell you that our Disability Commission is very, very interested in that as a possibility because that's a community that is particularly impacted by barriers to, to personal participation, and they would love to be able to participate remotely.
Okay.
I, I have heard that there is a bill in the House and in the Senate, and that every one of the 351 towns is supporting it. So we're hoping, and it's a bill to make these type of meetings, not town meeting, but the regular meetings, remote permanently.
This has clearly been a process, and I'm glad you were bending our representatives here because about a year ago, in a meeting, he said, well, I don't know about this. Can you tell me more about this? And I went, okay.
So Mr. Dane, do you have any remarks?
Before we get into some of the deeper issues, one of the things that has changed over the last few years, and something that we noticed at the meeting, was that the way the hall used to be set up was that there was a table, the select board, and the whole select board sat together at a table, and a table for the FinCom, and they sat together, and their table for the school committees, and they sat together so that they could consult on items that were before the board. They had noticed the, the town meeting as a meeting of their own so that they could act on things that were before the meeting, which I think was, I think we had a great loss in, in that just by having the chairs of the various committees be in the front and just having essentially the members of the boards being audience. So I think that's just a procedural thing.
So I'll, I'll note a couple things about that. This is another, this is another COVID thing because in our outdoor COVID meetings, we were struggling with what to do with our boards and committees because we didn't want them all to have to sit next to each other. And so we spread them out, and, and we had certain people at the front and so forth. And that kind of protocol made sense when we were trying not to sit next to each other during COVID. It didn't make sense at this point. But staff unfamiliar with how we used to do things, Henry, just continued doing it the way, the way, the way we were doing it during COVID. And I will tell you that I had COVID right before town meeting, and I didn't test negative until the morning of town meeting, which meant I did not go to the building to check the setup. So I didn't know that it was going to be like that until I got there. And, and if I had seen that that was how things were, I would have asked for tables to be set up for the committee, so I agree with you.
It wasn't a criticism, it was just a-
Yeah.
A desire for the future to bring that back.
Yes, I agree with you.
As far as remote meetings and things that create greater distance, the, there is an issue that is, relates to the law of unintended consequences. And, and what, and whether or not meetings like the town meeting help to build community, or whether they are there to get a job done. Of course, the great example was the dump. That is where people went, and that is where people communicated and actually related to each other as a community. And that is something that gets lost in the convenience of being to, participating online. So I, I think that caution is, caution is, would be, is a, is useful and being too, too speedy in adopting the technology. I, again, it's not a comment about the particular situation, but for instance, last, last week, we were introduced to the new Public Health Director. And I don't know why I expected that she would be here in the room with us and we could meet her. But she was on the screen, and she was there for a minute and a half and said, hello, how are you? We said, nice to meet you and nice to see you. But- We said, "Nice to meet you and nice to see you," but we really had no chance to really get to know the person at all. And things that are done remotely just don't really work that well, even if they're extremely convenient. I'm glad you mentioned the, some, another thing that other communities do, but you may remember years ago that we opened the town meeting in addition to the, you know, this, the colloquy of the moderator, we had a color guard at the beginning of the town meeting, which is something that I think serves to recognize the fact that our local town government is part of a larger state and nation, and the issues that we are dealing with are very interrelated, and that Concord does not stand alone in the world or alone in this country, and I think we should do more to recognize our ties to our country.
On that, Henry, also, I will observe that the, the color guard has been the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts historically, and they were invited this year, and we didn't hear back from them. So I think it just may have been difficult for them, or maybe there were COVID issues, and it was, since Chris Carmody was doing three jobs, I told him that was an issue he did not need to chase down.
Well, again, I'm talking about the future, and the, the problem with the last, the problem with the last three years we've had, combined with the turnover in personnel, is that our, our institutional memory has suffered Alzheimer's.
True.
And, and I think we need to bend over very backwards in order to bring back some of those things that really made the town what it has been for many people, which is why getting us to run the Patriot State Parade this year was so important.
It's great.
And why having a meaningful ceremony for Memorial Day is extremely important, because if you leave these things go for three or four years, the people who know how to do them and know what they are and have, have that, have had that experience, you know, just lose interest, or, so we have to work extra hard on this. So I think that's enough.
Okay. So should we move then to voting the articles?
Oh, but there is one, there is one thing that I had expected, that the review of town meeting that we ran would not be just a report of this kind on the procedure, but would also be, and maybe we needed to do it at another meeting, is to talk about what we learn from what succeeded and what failed at town meeting this year. I'm not talking about the procedure, I'm talking about the, the items that were raised, like some of the zoning issues and so, and I think we need to learn from how these things are, how these go in town meeting, because if things fail that are proposed by a town committee that has deeply studied them, there has to be something that we learn from those, those things in which people have made investment, either succeed or fail.
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
Though I want to say that those kinds of issues occur, I, in my memory, most town meetings. You know, that there, there almost always is at least one town initiative that is pursued and does not pass muster.
But the ability to learn from it is, can be repeated.
Perhaps, yes. And if we don't learn, we probably won't get re-elected, so.
Unfortunately, that's probably not true.
Okay. Well, so let's move now. We do have a couple of concrete actions that we need to take at this time, because there were two citizen petitions that were passed by town meeting, one about ranked choice voting, and another about authorizing the Select Board to petition a checkout bag for, impose a checkout bag charge. And so we need to actually ask or send, make our petitions. So can I ask the clerk for a motion on those points?
Okay, so the first one is, move to petition the General Court to enact home rule legislation to implement a ranked choice voting system for local elections substantially in the form as printed in the Article 23 handout and included in this board packet, which Article 23 was passed by a majority of voters at annual town meeting on May 1st, 2022, as certified by the town clerk.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I think, as you know, I was not in favor of this particular motion. However, I also think that it is, it is so poorly drafted, and it is such a bad job and is so unlikely to pass through the legislature, at least in anything form similar to what we're presenting to the legislature, that I actually am embarrassed to present this as the doings of the town of Concord. Putting the issue of whether it's a good idea to one side, it might, even assuming that it deserves to be considered and is, would be a better way to elect our officials, this is, this is a really piece of poor workmanship.
I think, though, that town meeting has made its will known, and this is, I think we, as a board, are going to now, I hope, put forward the will of town meeting. I think that's very important for us as a democratic body. Any other comments?
I agree with that, yeah.
I agree with that, and I would also state that, you know, if this, as this goes through the legislative process, if it were to be passed, there will be some conversation with the town regarding the language of it and tightening it up if necessary and so forth, so there's a future opportunity for...
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I think it passes?
Post.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. So it passes by four to one?
All right.
And then, do I have a motion on Article 37?
Okay, move to petition the General Court to adopt legislation to implement a minimum charge of 10 cents for all new checkout bags distributed in the town of Concord, as set forth in the Article 37 handout and included in this board packet, which Article 37 was passed by a clear majority vote at annual town meeting on May 2nd, 2022, as certified by the town clerk.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I just have a question. What needs to be done now? I guess, is this something, Carrie, that the staff does, or as clerk, do I have to do something, or what do we do now?
No, I, I believe that the staff will take care of this. If, if there is any action that's needed by the clerk, we'll be in touch with you.
Thank you.
Okay, now let's move on to the next item on our agenda, the outdoor dining policy, and to review submitted applications. Yes?
Mr. Chair, but before you move on to the next item, I'll, I'll just note that the other action item, I think, out of the warrant for the, for the Select Board, it is in Article 47, with the citizen petition asking the board to make recommendations with respect to the Reformatory Branch Trail, so there may be a letter or something that the board may wish to send to carry out that vote of town meeting. So you may not have it on your agenda this evening.
It's not on our agenda for this evening.
So you may wish to put that on your agenda going forward, because that, that's, that's the only other item on the town meeting warrant, I think, that may be a clear action item for the Select Board.
Okay, thanks for that note.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so on to the outdoor dining policy, and...
Before we get into that, please, just as a matter of, because of the longstanding relationship I have with one of the applicants, Fiorello's, I will not participate in the discussion of that application.
Okay.
But I do want to make a general comment about the application and the process itself. This, this application is, is long, burdensome, and unnecessary. It has a checklist with 25 items on it that is, it could not be designed to be...
How about this?
But, but...
The first part of this is about the policy, and I believe you're speaking to that.
That's right.
So I think that's okay, but I also believe that we should give our interim town manager a chance to speak, because I believe that there is a movement afoot to change the nature of the application, to reflect that we are now in a post-COVID time, and so at least those attributes that are related to COVID are being dropped from the application, and the future application will be simplified. But I have stolen some thunder, let me give it, some of it back.
Sure, thank you. Not, not from me, but I believe from Chris Carmody, who I believe is making the presentation, and he is in the Zoom audience.
Hi, good evening, all. It's good to see you all. We, the Select Board did take up this issue two years ago to determine how to do outdoor seating during the pandemic. It was decided the Select Board did have this power to regulate that, and there was a pretty extensive conversation about the rules and requirements, and how to ensure public safety during the pandemic, and try to conform normal public operations within the confines of the pandemic. Over the past three months, we have heard increasing comments to continue this plan. The Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission issued, had a public hearing and issued their own guidance on outdoor seating, and the governor also signed some legislation to extend disability for local municipalities to continue this program. So over the last three months, town staff had been looking at this application process and working to make it more efficient, to preserve public safety and promote local business. And specifically, a working group met a few weeks ago to take a closer look at the application that was adopted by the Select Board two years ago, and we have suggested some pretty substantial revisions. Elizabeth Hughes and I, she's also here joining us, and I have taken a pretty good cut at the application, and have suggested some revisions for your consideration to, to do this. In the meantime, and I don't want to jump ahead, but in the meantime, we have received two completed applications based on previous year's form of application, and to help those businesses move things along, we have suggested that the board consider both actions at the same time, which is the submitted applications by two restaurants, and also changing the form of the application itself. So Elizabeth, I don't know if you want to add, add to any of that?
One other thing I would add to this is, it's worth noting that neither one of these applicants is proposing to use any public space, not the sidewalks, not any public parking lots. Both applications relate to using property which is solely owned or leased by them. No town property, whatever, is involved in either one of these applications.
Right, I understand that there's a part of the application that actually has additional requirements if town property is involved.
Can't imagine you would have more.
There, there are other additional requirements, but, I mean, there are other things, even if outdoor dining is on the restaurant's own property, that are of an interest to the town, and I guess, Elizabeth, would you like to speak to the changes in the application process?
Sure. To Henry's point, while even Fiorello's and Paparazzi, while they may not be utilizing town property for their outdoor seating, they are utilizing areas that, under the zoning bylaw, which is what basically this policy that the Select Board is adopting allows certain items to be, I don't want to say, you know, overlooked, but taken into different consideration. So for Fiorello's, yes, it's land that is parking for an adjacent business. So the policy that the Select Board is adopting, which allows Fiorello's to utilize that area, is designated parking for a business. So I, I think the policy still needs to be put into place regardless of whether somebody is proposing outdoor seating on town land or not. Paparazzi is a slightly different situation. They have more than enough parking for their restaurant, they could actually permanently do an outdoor seating area. It would require site plan review under the zoning bylaw, but in the interim right now, this policy that the Select Board is discussing allows them to move forward much quicker and actually have outdoor seating as soon as the, the weather gets nice, which was last week.
Other comments on the policy aspect here, on the transition of the policy?
Mr. Chair, could I just add just a few more things?
Sure.
So we have listed, we've listed 14 requirements on the original application, we've recommended striking four of them, so that's a pretty, you know, it's a 33% cut, and that the existing requirements that we think should be maintained really speak to Concord's current practices regarding getting approval for the property owner to have seating there. We've gotten comments from Public Safety and Public Works on having safety barriers for that area, having signage that conforms to the town's sign bylaws, clearing, clearing trash from the area that's, that's being used, and from the Public Health Director just having a, a map of the, the seating outside. So these are all specific recommendations that have been reviewed by the Health Department, Planning, the Town Manager's Office, Fire, Police, and Public Works.
Okay.
So actually, I have a question about that. So is the process in the future going to be that first all of those departments that you just named, Chris, would approve, and then it would come to the Select Board for the final vote? That's what I thought the process was, but I do see in tonight's packet that it looks like the Select Board is going first, and then the departments are going to review, or else maybe they have reviewed, but they just haven't checked it off in the packet material, it, those approvals were still blank.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. I mean, the Select Board is, could just condition its approval on the fulfillment of department, specific department approvals, that, you know, where Public Safety has to weigh in, or Public Works has to weigh in on the location of safety barriers and stuff like that, so that, that's...
Okay, well, we can do that, but in the future, it might be better to have the departments first, because when it comes to the Select Board, we might have to take our vote like we do with National Grid, you know, to include certain conditions that perhaps the Public Works or the Police Chief wants, you know, and we can include those conditions in our vote that way.
I would agree, that we should be the last port of call, not the first.
But tonight can be an exception, because the weather's nice already.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, do we have a motion on the policy point?
Move to approve the updated outdoor dining application as included in the board packet.
Do I have a second?
Are you going to add the amendment as discussed?
Um, well, the application doesn't really say who goes first. Are you saying we should...
Right, I don't think that it...
But aren't we approving the policy?
Yes, but I would say that, I thought you were referring to the order of approvals, which is not part of the...
Yeah, I am, I am. I consider that part of the policy.
Okay, but I thought that the motion was with regard to the application.
Okay, I'm sorry, Terry.
I mean, we could also say the process is discussed, sure.
Okay, all right, let's try again. Move to approve the updated outdoor dining application as included in this board packet, with the Select Board being the last group to give approval.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay. So now let's look at our first application. And that is from Fiorello's. So who is presenting that application tonight? Thank you. Please come to the table and identify yourself.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it.
Sure, so identify yourself.
My name is Leslie Palola. I'm the General Manager of Fiorello's Restaurant.
Okay, thank you. And I think that the board has reviewed the materials that were provided in the packet. I think it was quite a comprehensive application. And sorry that it had to go through the additional COVID protocols at that time because we didn't have the newer application. I'll just start off that I I had one question, which is I was surprised by the extent of the outdoor dining. And it seemed to me that, you know, depending upon whether you continue with all of the indoor tables, you could end up with quite an expansion of the the restaurant's size. And I mean, when I think of our overall town process, you know, required parking spaces, you know, I don't know, other facilities related to the number of of tables, I just wondered if there was a concern about that. Now, I know that on a prime night, everybody wants to sit outside. So their internal interior of the restaurant might be more or less empty. But yeah, Saturday night, you might fill everybody up. So I'm just curious what the implications are. And actually, I have a question to that to town staff, whether there's a concern on that front or any controls that are in place regarding that, just given, you know, the potentially dramatic expansion.
So we're still not back to full capacity inside the dining room.
Okay.
When we adjusted our floor plans during COVID, we continued. They are closer than six feet apart, but we did not add all of our tables back in. So just as a normal Saturday night, we have to monitor that every night, whether we have indoor dining or outdoor dining.
Okay. Any comments from town staff?
Sure, Mr. Mr. Chairman. So to be more business friendly, not this past town meeting, town meeting before, the zoning bylaw was amended for parking to exclude outdoor seating from the parking requirement. And part of that discussion and the reasoning behind that had to do with allowing restaurants to function as a restaurant and understanding what their kitchen and their staff capacity is. And if you have too many seats, you are not going to fill all those seats if the restaurant and the kitchen cannot handle that capacity. So allowing restaurants to basically regulate them themselves and what type of environment, what type of weight, what type of food they want to be able to provide their customers, and providing that balance between indoor and outdoor seating.
But are there any Department of Health requirements or anything related to that increased capacity? I guess, of course, it's a different department than you, but if you might be aware or or.
Marsha is here.
All right, yeah. Yeah, maybe you can turn the mic towards her.
I'm not aware of any other. Marsha Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management. I'm not aware of anything other than things that the Health Division would need to know are like the where the servers are, how they're delivering the food. We don't have the same COVID protocols that we did previously. So it, again, it's just making sure that the waitstaff have what they need in order to efficiently serve the food safely to people. And I think the program that has been identified by Fiorello's manages that well.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, and questions from other members of the board? Yes, Linda.
I have a related question. The additional seating that you've provided is all within your private property?
Correct.
And never spills over into the parking lot that's adjacent? And then the and your site plan indicated that, so that was helpful to see. The how would you describe the oversight in terms of the direct sight line for that area, given the the position of the kitchen and and the rest of your restaurant?
Sure, so we have an entrance and an exit that goes right into the outdoor dining area. And then we have a kitchen door on the other side. So the guests go in and out through the outdoor dining door. And the servers can go through the kitchen in and out with food. We have double doors with blinds that are open, so we can see directly everybody in the outdoor dining space. So there's always eyes on the outdoor dining. There's always a staff member outside.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to make one point back to the parking. The parking area where we set up the outdoor dining, that's only utilized during the day. And that's a lease agreement between the owner and the tenants. So we set up the outdoor dining at 4 o'clock every night when the stores close. So we do not interfere with any of the parking at all.
Sort of a modified shared parking arrangement, yeah. Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, are we ready for a motion? Then please.
Okay, move to approve the outdoor restaurant seating application of Fiorella More LLC, doing business as Fiorella's Cucina, located at 24 Walden Street, as included in this board packet.
Maybe Fiorella More. Okay, so any second?
Second.
No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now we'll move to our second application from Paparazzi. Who is representing the restaurant?
Good evening. My name is Julian Maria, and I'm the General Manager of Paparazzi. And this gentleman here is Gary Morrison. He is Regional Director for Paparazzi.
Okay. So once again, review the materials within your packet. And I think in the case of Paparazzi, I mean, you have previously had this setup, right? Can you describe any changes from the prior arrangements that you've had?
The setup is exactly the same, except that we do not have the tent. We just have the tables, chairs, and umbrellas, which are the barriers.
So it's a fair weather friend now?
Yes.
Yeah. So I I think in given that, it to me, it seemed like a very straightforward application. I did any want to have any questions?
I have a question. How long does this last? What is what's the expiration for this?
I think isn't it an annual process?
It is an annual process. Generally, we take it till about October, depending on weather.
Got it, okay, good, thank you.
We want to have it broken down before any poor weather hits.
Snow.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, can we have a motion?
Okay, move to approve the outdoor restaurant seating application of Paparazzi Trattoria of Concord, doing business as Paparazzi, located at 768 Elm Street, as included in this board packet.
Second.
Okay. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good season, everyone.
Yes. Great to have restaurants full of people. Okay, so now we're ready to discuss another fair weather activity, the trolley and shuttle pilot. Okay. So let's hear about it.
I first want to apologize. The pollen is making my voice come in and out.
And you should identify yourself.
Sorry, Erin Stevens, Public Information and Communications Manager for the town. I'm also town staff for the Transportation Advisory Committee and was helping out on this trolley pilot project. And I have with me, Marsha.
Marsha Rasmussen, Director of Planning and Land Management. This is finding transportation options has been an ongoing issue and effort on the planning division with Elizabeth Hughes, Town Planner. She is online and available, as well as Beth Williams, our Economic Vitality and Tourism Manager. And this current initiative is is built is building on things that we have been doing for the last 10 years, trying to find ways to fund and ways to pilot various transportation options for different groups of people. This particular one is focused on our visitors. And I'll let Erin Erin work very closely with Beth Williams in in developing all of this. And Elizabeth Hughes provided a great deal of information, so I'm going to let them lead off.
Marsha's here for support. So what we're looking at here is a trolley pilot project. Unfortunately, trolleys are hard to come by this time of year. So it'll probably be more like a small mini bus, 14 to 20 passenger, something along those lines. But I'll probably refer to it as a trolley, because that's sort of the the term we've been using. So what we're looking at is a hop-on, hop-off trolley. So that means that people could get on at any point in the trolley, travel a stop or two, and hop right back off. And for one fee for the entire day, continue on that route. So they could get on at 9:00 AM and continue to ride hopping on and off until 4:00 PM. We're looking to have this follow the MBTA schedule so that people could get on at the commuter rail station in Concord Center, and they would not have to bring their car to Concord in order to see the historic sites here in Concord Center. So this is really great for our sort of transportation initiatives that you can see in the Long Reach Plan. It's also great for sustainability. And it's also great for our traffic. We always see that there's an influx of cars when people are coming during our high peak season to see how many how many extra cars there are can be astounding. So I think that having this transportation could really help to lower the number of individual vehicles that are traveling around and can really help some of those parking woes that we see. Some of the things that we're looking at doing are having it be from June, hopefully, until the end of October. It'll be running seven days a week. And we're looking at doing a nominal fee of $4. The idea behind that is that by paying a little bit, you're invested in the service and you're going to want to to hop on and off and actually use it. And that if we have if we are fortunate enough to get to expand the service later, if it becomes more expensive to run, that we might have to up the fee a little bit. And it's easier to go from $4 to, say, $7 than from free to $7. So that was kind of our thinking behind that. We think it's really important to bring visitors into Concord and to have a way for them to get around that's convenient and as a way for them to not have to worry about where they're going to park, where they're going to be, how they get from place to place. That's all taken care of for them. This is also really great for we want data so that we can later submit for a FLAPP grant. That is a federal land access program. We are working with the National Park Lexington and Lincoln on a expanded trolley program, which would span the three towns and the national park. And it is something that having this data would really help us to have a stronger application when applying for that grant. This is something that we are looking to have an expanded trolley for REV 250 because we know that there's going to be a large influx of people coming into town. And we want to make sure that we're prepared to help people get around in the most convenient way, but also that's managing our traffic.
I'll interject here.
Yeah.
This this was a concept that Elizabeth Hughes and I were working with BJ Dunn before he stepped down as Superintendent for the Minuteman National Park. Under BJ's direction, we did get a feasibility study to look to with the Volpe Center, who studied this concept of connecting Lexington, Lincoln, and Concord to our train stations and to the Minuteman National Park. And it's out of that study, this concept came forward. So we are trying, we're focused on Concord at this point in time, just to see what since it's Concord-centric, but I think it can build. Once we have that information, we'll be able to translate it to this additional information. The FLAPP grant is due in August. So we wanted to accumulate at least two months' worth of data to build on that that application. The grant would not be available until 2023, the fall of 2023. So this is a pilot and is going to see what the level of interest is. And and we can manage what our success might look like.
So we estimate that based on we got quotes because we thought that it was going to cost a lot less than it did. So we started off by getting quotes from several different vendors. We believe that it'll cost about $100,000 based on the quotes that we received. Because it is over the over the procurement mark, we are going out to bid. The bid has gone out today, subject to funding contract, all those sorts of things. So if we receive no funding, then it doesn't go through, and that's fine. But we'd like it to. We do have a lot of support from the Minuteman National Historical Park, from the Concord Business Partnership, from the Concord Chamber of Commerce. The Transportation Advisory Committee gave it its enthusiastic seal of approval. Terry was. And we also have several local businesses that have contacted us, saying, if there's anything we can do, we're very excited about this project. We want to see it. We want to see it through. So I think those are sort of the the main things. I don't know if you have anything you want to add or.
I don't, but I don't know if Beth Williams or Elizabeth Hughes might have anything to add.
I don't see them speaking.
Come here.
Oh, here we go.
Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay.
So what I can add is that what this pilot program will also do is right before COVID hit, Marsha and I were successful in getting a grant for a commuter shuttle in under the Workforce Transportation Program. And that was $250,000, which the state took back right as COVID hit. So that never went anywhere. And there was tremendous support for that shuttle as well. It was a much longer shuttle connecting West Concord and Concord Center. So there is already momentum for this type of project. And what we hope is that this pilot for this summer allows us to get the data we need to expand it for next summer and then expand it even further with including some type of West Concord loop and that workforce element as well before we get to 2025.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board? Sorry, Beth Williams, did you have a comment?
I would just add that the other the other opportunity here is moving people to more cultural and economic places within the town. So what we often hear in the visitor center, when people come in, they have a short amount of time. Regardless of how much information we give them, they only have two hours. So how much can they see in two hours? And one way that they can see more is being able to hop on a trolley and get somewhere a lot quicker. That also enables them to realize how much more there is to see, which ends up them spending the whole day having dinner here, planning an overnight, and adding to sort of the economic impact of this. So the other thing I'll point out is, for me, it's a disability, a disability solution as well. We often have patrons that cannot take a walking tour, that can't walk up to the North Bridge and don't have a car. How do they get from A to B? So that's one thing we heard from a lot of the cultural partners, is their excitement about being able to showcase more of Concord. I remember reading and envision Concord. One thing that people were concerned about was visitation to the North Bridge is very, very high. But that doesn't always replicate itself into the downtown districts. And this is one step towards making that maybe a little bit easier and more successful.
Okay. Questions? Yes, Mary?
Yeah, I'll I'll start, thank you. First of all, I'm all for having cross-sector connections between cultural attractions and the businesses because I think that reviving getting business into our centers is really important to me. But I first of all, I want to make sure that we understand that this is very different than the commuter shuttle that you talked about earlier. This is really a tourist. This is not a moving people from it's not a workforce or a commuter. It's a tourist.
This is this is focused on visitors, yes.
Right, it is. So it's it's very different than what we were talking about earlier with the shuttle. But I guess I would like to see a broader business support for this. And I'm wondering, why wasn't the Economic Vitality Committee included in? And I'm wondering, why wasn't the Economic Vitality Committee included in in conversations about this? What where's their input to this?
They only meet once a month. We did not bring this up at the very beginning of of May, their agenda was fairly full when we, I know that I was trying to get something in at the last minute with Ann Burke appearing to that that committee. And this is because this was a concept that was first conceived prior to COVID, and we had the information, we had the momentum, we were talking to various other groups, and perhaps it was an oversight to not include the EBC, but it was discussed at the Concord Business Partnership. When both groups were meeting, it was part of the Chamber of Commerce Executive Committee meeting with the town last week. And so I think that we've done some quick outreach, there may be some people online who would like to add information. I know that Marie Foley is here in support of it. So it was an oversight to not include the EBC. We were moving forward fairly quickly on all of this, because there had been a lot of groundwork, and it would definitely be something.
Also, I think there's some miscommunication or misunderstanding as far as the support from the Concord Business Partnership. I'm not sure that they've really vetted this fully. So I'm not, I'd like to see broader business support for this, because we're talking about, I think, using ARPA funds to fund this, right? And the business community, as far as I know, and I've talked to many of the people there for the last few years, actually, have been very supportive of, for example, an Economic Vitality Director. So I guess I'm wondering, wouldn't, maybe that would be a better use of the $100,000 as opposed to a tourism trolley? Because that, I know, has broad support. And I'm not sure, I would just like to see more more support, and I'd like to hear from the Economic Vitality Committee as far as whether they think this is a good use of of money. That's my first concern. Mike, can I keep going?
You've got the floor.
My second concern is, and this is not, hasn't to do with the tourism, the trolley, it's more about our use of ARPA funds. And what is the criteria that we're using? And I know earlier you cleared up the confusion as far as we don't need town meeting approval. But for FY '23, I guess I'd like to understand better, what is our criteria that we're using? Because this is $100,000, right? So what is the criteria that we're using in order to spend? If we're not going to town meeting, then what are, you know, how are we going to be releasing those funds? So again, I've, to summarize, I've got two concerns. One is broad customer, broad business support, especially, and I'm kind of disappointed that we're not including West Concord in this, because it's, so that's, that's a concern I have. And I'm also disappointed that it's not more of a workforce or commuter, or real transportation as opposed to just tourism. But that's my personal. I've got two issues. I'd like broader business support, and I'd like to hear specifically from the Concord Business Partnership and the Economic Vitality Committee, what they think about this. And also, I'd like to see some better, some clear criteria of how to spend ARPA funds. So that's my.
Linda?
Yes. Is there any reason why it has to be only tourist-oriented at this point?
Money. I mean, nine to four, nine, we've aligned the start with the train, the MBTA. And it's, you know, and because most of the venues for historic resources do not open until 10:00 AM. So this is going to pick people up at the train station, get them into the visitor center. They can stop in Concord Center, get a cup of coffee, hop back on, go out to the the park or to one of the other, the park is, at least you can walk through there, they are open at 10:00. So that's part of, that's the main reason at this point in time. We don't know what the the exact needs are, and this is a pilot. This is gathering information, and it is the only source of funds that we currently see available. There is, there are no town resources available, there are no grants currently available. And so we wanted to get this information and these numbers in place prior to 2025, when we are going to be inundated with visitors.
So I think this is exciting, that we're finally, you know, getting closer to being able to launch at least something, because we do need the experience in this arena. I guess, short of not being able to fully address the business community at this point, is there any reason that if it accommodated people's schedules, particularly for Emerson Hospital, which were, at least on one of the, and some of the material that was presented, I thought I saw them on the, I did not?
That's part of the work, that was part of the work.
Too bad, because there might have been a way to, at least for that location. And I'm, so let me.
We have only one, this is only one vehicle, and we're, what we tried to do is keep it to a half-hour loop, so that people can can spend some time wherever, and then hop back on to get to the next point. Then they would might have, take another half hour. So if we had more vehicles, it would make it more advantageous to to have more offerings. But we're, again, limiting the number in order to meet the needs of just having one vehicle.
So assuming this did get approved and moves forward, what will be the mechanism for a driver assurance? You know, would they be cored?
So the, it's sort of a full package, if you will. So we're getting everybody, everything, the, you know, the drivers, the the maintenance on the vehicle, the vehicle, it's all coming as sort of a package deal. We can certainly, we have the ability to cory, so we could certainly do that for any drivers. We have insurance that is being required for the bid. So there's, there's a lot of pieces into that, that that they've thought of, thankfully, so we don't have to.
Right. This is a full-service package that we're requiring a bid for.
So, and I'm sure you've already thought of some of these items, but even with the full-service package, I'm sure you'll have town council review that with the town manager as well, just to make sure that we're covered with all the aspects of that. In your pilot, I guess I would also encourage you that if for some reason, assuming this goes forward, you found that one of the stops, you know, had one person all day long. You know, it might be an opportunity to see if there isn't a way to slip in the Emerson Hospital to keep your half-hour run. I keep trying to find a way to test this, it may not be possible, but.
Why not West Concord Village?
Yeah, well, do we have any, if this is?
Elizabeth's got a comment.
Can I make a couple of points, only because in my previous life, I did a significant amount of transportation planning? And the success of a shuttle deals with convenience. It's, it, it also, it does deal with certain employers, but it does deal with convenience. The Workforce Transportation Grant that we received was $250,000 for the grant. We, as a community, Marcia and I, for different various budgets, I think we had $30,000 going towards that as the towns match. That was one shuttle, it was eight stops, workforce stops, it was an hour ride. And it went from seven, it went from seven, I believe, Marcia, correct me if I'm wrong, seven to five. And that was also going to be questionable, whether that shuttle with an hour ride was going to make enough impact for the workforce to be able to utilize that to meet that, those scheduling needs. The issue with Emerson is the employees at Emerson do not have a coinciding schedule with the visitor population, which brings a significant number of vehicles into the center of town, where we are already seeing congestion. Emerson Hospital has a transportation program, as far as where they park across the street and shuttle and from different areas. To include a workforce element into this pilot at this point, Marcia's comment, it is all about money. You can, you can expand this, if you'd like to throw $300,000 of ARPA funds towards this, you could get the workforce and the visitor lined up. It's getting the vehicles, it's getting the drivers, it's getting the stops and the timing of those stops coordinated with those businesses. And sadly, workforce and visitors don't have that same coordinating schedule. So you, you still would be booking.
Don't they? I mean, well, I mean, it would seem like the workforce transportation peak hours would be seven to nine and four to six, or four to seven.
But there's overlap, definitely, but.
But, I mean, well, they could pretty much bookend each other.
But you can't have a driver go from 7:00 AM to 6:00.
You'd have one morning driver and one afternoon driver, but they would have half their shift be each type of transportation.
But it expands the hours.
It does. We would need, you know, double the cost, definitely.
Yes.
And, I mean, maybe I should, unless you're done.
I was just going to thank the, Elizabeth, you know, Marcia started with more money, and Elizabeth ended there, but thank you for giving us the benefit of your experience.
I had another line of questioning, but, okay, go ahead, Terry.
Well, I would really like to see this go through, because most of the critique that I'm hearing is that it's not enough. Like, we all agree, we really need to do something. And Marcia was saying, this is the culmination of 10 years of work. So we know that we had that Volpe grant for workforce that was almost started, but then we had COVID. And we had several other projects that almost started. And we really don't have any data still. If we do this project this summer, we will have some data, which we desperately need. And then we can make all kinds of expansions. Of course, I'd like to include Emerson Hospital, I want to include West Concord Village, make it for workforce, employees, for commuters. But we can't do, I don't want to see us not do it at all, because the perfect is the enemy of the good, or whatever that expression is. So I'm really in favor of doing this and getting it started. Then we can learn a lot and tweak it and improve it in the next few years.
Henry, did you have any remarks?
Well, this seems to be anchored on tourists arriving by the railroad. And I wonder if you have any data on whether or not the commuter rail is used by tourists to come to Concord. Of course, the primary use used to be for people to go to Cambridge and Boston to go to work, and that seems to have changed. But I think my my sense is that the primary use of the commuter rail is for people to come to Concord to go to work, to work in Concord, people who live out in Eyre and Leominster and so on, who can't afford to live in Concord, can live to afford to live there, but use a railroad to come to work. And I don't even know how many of them do that, but, and if you're going to have this work, you need not only your market, because your market may be very different. If what happens really is that people drive to Concord to ride around in the bus. But you also need to do some marketing, so people know that you have it.
Right.
And it may take you more than a summer to people, for people to know that. It's kind of like the the Cape Cod Dinner Train, you know, it took years for them to get that back going again, because people didn't think of it, think of that being an I think from a, I think Mary, Mary is right. I don't think the Business Partnership has taken a position on this, at least as of this afternoon. Officially, they said, we haven't taken a vote on it. So I don't think that you can necessarily count on their support. And I don't know whether they feel that this would be the best, the best thing to do. Certainly, there is going to be, I think, probably a very serious kind of community relations issue if it does not include going back and forth between West Concord and Concord Center. And I think there are going to be a lot of people who are going to feel, yes, they don't like it, because it's not enough, because it doesn't get them from the assisted living to the supermarket, or to get them to their doctor's appointments, or to, you know, to to serve basic transportation needs. And I don't know what, I don't know whether this is going to prove anything by spending $100,000 for a summer, and it isn't a trolley. It isn't like that romantic thing that goes down the street and bell rings and stuff like that, and you say, hop on and hop off. If it's not a trolley with a running board on it, like they used to have, or you still have in San Francisco, you know, it's not going to have that same kind of charm. You have to climb into a minivan and talk about, you know, handicapped access. That's, that's going to be a real issue.
So, may I, I haven't remarked on this yet. So why don't I throw in a few comments? First, I would, I noted the expected revenues, I think it was around $16,000. I'm sure that's conservative or something, but, you know, when I looked at that, and especially compared to the $100,000 cost, it just struck me that, first of all, that's implying that it's costing $20 per ride, okay, or I mean, per participant. And so you think, well, you know, call Lyft or Uber for that. But then the the other is that it struck me that, you know, only recovering 16% of the cost, even relative to the MBTA, it sounds, you know, pessimistic. The, it's, I've always, as a tourist, when I've been in a place, it's always a hassle to sign up for something or to pay for something, just that's all the the trouble. If you see the bus go by, you know, you did the idea that, like, oh, I could just jump on it and go, is so much better. And if we had just a way to count people, we might get more benefit of understanding the potential yield. I don't, I don't really buy the notion of an investment that someone makes and then they will use it. I think that's true of some types of services, but in the case of free transportation, I don't think you need much of a sense of investment. It's like, it gets me there, that's what I want to do. And it's really relative to walking, in this case. So, so I would encourage actually offering the service for free for the first summer. It would simplify administration, it might simplify our overall costs on our side, it might encourage greater ridership, you know. It might also mean that residents get some benefit, because if the bus happens to be going their way, they could just jump on and get there, even though that's not the objective. The the second thing, though, is I'm just concerned about the quality of service, because it's one bus. It's, you know, and the frequency, given a seven-mile route, is two, two runs an hour. So half an hour between buses, you're competing with walking, and the distances are half a mile or whatever. So if, I don't know how participants will understand whether the bus just left, or whether the bus is just about to arrive. I don't know, do we have software that's going to be available that'll show somebody?
Yeah, so there's an app available.
That's fantastic. So that part's great. And if people can just scan a 2D barcode and see, oh, the bus is about to get here, that that's awesome. But then, the the other thing is.
We solve that, too.
I'm hoping that we could just improve the the frequency by shortening the route. And I think that, just like Henry mentioned, the biggest opportunity is the MBTA station, because, for two reasons. One is, I think it conflates the business or sort of resident use case or worker use case with the tourist use case. I don't believe, I mean, by necessity, tourists coming to Concord, especially if they're on these historic tours, they're going to be in a car, because they're going to want to go to the National Historic Park, more than just Miriam Corner, they're going to want to go to Lexington. What, it's, they're going to be in, I mean, maybe occasionally, you would have somebody come out from Boston in the train, but I bet almost everybody will. But the second reason is that to get to the Thorough Depot Station, you have to go through traffic lights, stop signs, you know, it, I think it's the most time-consuming of the legs, and it's the most constrained, because you've got that train arrival schedule that you've got to. because you've got that train arrival schedule that you've got, that you're going to be wait, have the bus waiting and, you know, for the train and all that. I, I think it will just reduce the quality of service. And that if we had a higher frequency, shorter route strictly to the, the tourist destinations as opposed to commuter destination, because it's, these are not commuters, that maybe we could get a higher utilization of, of the, of the service. That's just my hunch. I'm just saying it as a.
And, and see, all of you have made assumptions and hunches, and we are in the same boat. And this is why we want a pilot, because then we will have actual information. There is a lot of anecdotal information coming out about people who take the train, get off the train and go, where am I? Because there's no information at the train station, there's no way to get around once you get to Concord, and finding an Uber or Lyft is next to impossible at certain times of the day.
No, and I.
Mick Pappas uses Uber when he can, and he has complained about it. So there, I know that we would have the opportunity to promote this in Boston hotels, but because we don't have a way of getting people from the train station to these venues, we're not advertising there. And we're not, and, and Beth can attest to this. She said, why should I promote this when somebody coming out here isn't going to be able to get around?
Right. So can I ask, that was one of my questions. Beth, if we do this, what will your marketing strategy be?
So we have a membership that we are pending approval with, with the Greater Boston Concierge Association, which will get us access to all the concierges in the Greater Boston area. So that's one opportunity, and that will, our, our application has to be yet approved. But I have people to vouch for us, so I think we're okay on that. The second thing is MBTA is now allowing advertising on their app, and you can target it by geography. So we can target people directly coming to, to Concord. We can also target based on keywords. So commuters, people looking at trains that are also looking at historic places, the word Concord. There's a lot of opportunity for digital marketing that's very affordable and something that our current web company can do. And then the third thing is our brochures are now being widely distributed thanks to the Greater Merrimack Valley CVB. So we have distribution a lot wider, hotels, airports, bus stations. So all of that information will be out there, and we'll, we'll create a QR code on our existing material so that allows them to be able to access that information.
From the people who come to the visitor center, which is probably a very good source of information, do we have any data on where they came from and how they got here?
Yes, we do. I track everybody that comes through the front door. We collect, you know, geographic information, zip codes. We do have, as you noted, there's a fair amount that are by car, but we are seeing a lot more looking for ways to get around that call us for the train schedule and call us once they get to the train schedule, train station, and can't figure out how to get to Concord Center. So we have a lot more students that are coming out, which is sort of a new audience for us, at least in the, the nearly three years I've been there. And we do get a lot of people that call us from Boston Hotels that are not bringing a car because they're staying in Boston. So those are the people that were really going to benefit from having this sort of service.
So can I just, so you get people that don't know how to get from the train station to the center of town?
Yep, because there's no directional signage when they get off the train.
What about maps on their phone?
Yeah, well.
Yes.
Okay.
But a lot of people that take the train do so because they're not GPS users in their cars, so they don't have cars. So they do rely on their cell phone. And the map service being what it is, that can be problematic, too. So believe it or not, we get phone calls for that.
Okay, so what I feel like at this point is, first of all, we've gotten a good understanding of the proposal. I think that there are some additional pieces of data that people want to get, and that I would suggest that we come back, I don't know, do you think the next meeting's too soon, or maybe June 6th, to really deliberate on this?
May 31st.
So we would, to have bids in hand would be good, right? So why don't we take this up for a decision June 6th? Is that all right?
I think that would be fine. I think the EVC will meet prior to that meeting so we can present and.
Yeah, that would give ample time for committees to weigh in.
As well as the Concord Business Partnership.
What, what is the time lag between our giving the green light and being able to implement this?
I think it's very short. It sounds like they could dispatch a driver at a bus pretty quickly.
They said that they could get it to us within a week.
Within a week?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's soon enough. I mean, you, you really would prefer to hit peak season, right? You went two months of data. So I think we're in time. Yes.
Do you think we would also have some criteria then to evaluate spending against ARPA?
Well, I believe that Carrie has a broader whole statement that she plans to make. I think, did we have a, I think I have a proposal for a future meeting that would.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's in the works?
If, if we, if we need to have it for June 6th, we'll have it for June 6th.
I, I think that that, so I had it on next week's meeting. Town managers FY23 ARPA spending proposals.
Good. That in, and I can tell you, it's not, it's not going to happen for the 24th, but we'll, we can have it for the 6th.
23rd, okay, so we'll, we'll move it on the, the 6th, and it'd be a great tandem thing with this. We'll do yours first, of course.
That's fine. There, there is an audience member who had a hand up for quite a while.
Okay, yes, we can take some questions or comments from the audience. Please identify yourself.
Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I was just curious as to whether or not the trolley or the bus was going to be considered to be electric? Could we try for that?
So we, we did look into and asked if there could be electric vehicles. There isn't something yet that is good enough that could really make the run. We were looking at hybrid models to see if that could sort of bridge the gap. But once again, because this is a pilot, we're, that's one of the reasons why we don't want to be looking into purchasing something, because there could be new, new technology coming out soon that would be an electric model that would allow us to do it, or for instance, a hybrid model that has better mileage.
Or autonomous electric vehicles.
Sure.
Betcha.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Other comments from the public? Yes, I see someone, please, I think it's Lois Suarez.
Lois Suarez, 34 Everett Street. I often see people coming from the train and they kind of flow down Sudbury Road. Has anyone done a survey and actually asked people when they get off the train where they're going and what they're doing? And I think, you know, it's been mentioned a couple of times tonight, the lack of signage at the train station that directs people. I mean, I've answered questions. I am a town guide, but I kind of inactive about it, but kind of quiet. But I will still, you look at people and you can tell they're lost. And, you know, you talk to them or whatever and point them in, you know, towards the center of town, towards the visitor center. And this happens all the time, but there seems to be no numbers or any kind of contact with the people who actually get off the train. And you've got that as one of your stops.
We have a, a comment from here in the room, so let's take that. I can just step up to the microphone, yeah, and identify yourself.
Marie Foley, I am with Revolutionary Concord, and also I am the President of the Chamber of Commerce. And I've been fortunate enough to have.
Your address?
Oh.
I, I think she has standing as the.
32 Main Street. I've been here for 36 years with business, and we've gone through this transportation issue many times. I can tell you from being in a shop and speaking with my fellow retailers that a trolley is a huge help. When the Liberty Ride was here, it made a large impact on our business. But that is one thing. I would also like to address the fact that we now have a greater number of people that are coming by train. A lot of people have given up their cars, and a lot of visitors are not renting cars because they have become so exorbitantly expensive at the airport or even picking them up in Boston. A lot of them in the Boston area alone are $300 to $500 a day. And they just don't want to do that. I mean, I just made a reservation to Grand Rapids and really looked into if Uber was really possible out there because the car is $290 a day. So if you're coming to this area, you don't want to spend that, and you're mainly in a walking area in Boston, but you want to come out to Concord, you're prohibited sort of from doing it and seeing many different venues. You can come to Concord Center, you can go to West Concord, but you can't, you can walk to one of those locations, maybe. I know when people come into the store and I say, oh, well, it's a half a mile to the North Bridge you have to go. Oh, well, not today. We're going to go have something to eat, and that will take too long to do it. Now, yes, will a trolley also take time to do it? Yes, but in their mindset, it's not going to take as long as walking. So I think it is something that is of a real use for this town. I think, you know, in retail, they always say 80% is good enough to start with. Don't worry about getting that 100% done. You do that on the second phase. But you need to get it, something started so that it's out there and then build on it.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can close the discussion on this topic, and we will take it back up June 6th. Thanks very much for all of your contributions. And so now we're ready to move to nominations.
Well, we have the tour guide.
Oh, the tour guide licenses, sorry. Yep, tour guide licenses.
Do we have any discussion, or do you want a motion?
I think that we just have some out of cycle additional licenses. Carrie, did you have any further remarks on that?
No.
Okay. I think we just need to approve the license.
Move to approve the tour guide licenses as listed in the memo included in this board packet.
Check it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. So now we are ready for committee nominations.
Okay, committee nominations appointed by the town manager with approval of the select board, Ari Charles of 654 Old Bedford Road, to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire in 2025. David Carr of 82 Law's Brook Road, to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire in 2024. William Camaza of 28 Davis Court, to the Natural Resources Commission for a term to expire in 2025. Joshua Lee of 65 Everett Street, to the Transportation Advisory Committee.
Okay, and can you take us to the next set of nominations?
Can I make a comment on those nominations?
Sure.
I was very pleased to see that one of the results of our meeting with the Tax Fairness Committee last week, which was disbanded, immediately gave us somebody to serve on another committee, which was extremely relevant. And I, I was particularly pleased by the fact that I saw David Carr's name nominated to the Board of Assessors was the fact that the Board of Assessors has been one of the most difficult obstacles toward advancing the cause of the residential exemption. And we had extremely strong support from the Tax Fairness Committee, both in the person of Mr. Bukus and Mr. Carr, of the value of the residential exemption. So I'm very happy to see Mr. Carr being on the Board of Assessors.
Note that he was previously on the Board of Assessors as well.
Well, that's even better.
Okay. Prior to his term on tax fairness. Okay, any other points before we move into the next set of nominations?
I was just going to ask, in terms of the nominations, are we assuming that that's through April of the?
Yes, but for nominations, it's less formal. I think we can be specific when we do the appointment.
Okay.
Because that's when we will actually, you know.
I just wanted a sense of it, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, committee nominations appointed by the Select Board, Christian Haggerty to the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Commission.
Okay.
And then under appointments, move to approve the appointment of Sue Felshen of 19 Sunnyside Lane, to the Planning Board for a term expiring April 30th, 2027.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Okay, we're all in favor. Then let's move to Select Board Liaison Reports. I'm just wondering, since this is an out of order meeting anyway, I, I do think there are a few key points to make, and so if you have something, you know, important, yes, Mary?
Very, very quickly. The, the Public Works Commission voted to increase the water fee for FY23 by 4% and the sewage fee by 3% at their meeting last week. Did I say three or did I say two?
Three.
It's two.
Did they, did they give a dollar?
Two.
Did they give a, a dollar amount for the fee per Title V, you know, gallon? It's, it's something like, it used to be like $50 or $60 per Title V gallon.
They might have, Henry, I didn't catch that. I didn't catch that. But anyway, so, and the water is going up by 4% because they've got a big capital investment ahead. We know the water filtration system. The only other thing is the Concord Municipal Light. I went there and they elected a new chair. Brian Foles will be the chair, and he's got a full, so far, he's got a lot of goals he's trying to accomplish.
Okay. Who wants to be second?
I can go next.
All right. What the?
CHCD expects, they're moving towards the closing on June 29th with the Estebet River Bluffs. They're well underway for due diligence for that closing. They've already done some soil testing, they've done a home inspection for the building that's on the property, and a number of other things. The Concord Housing Authority, I would just note that the repositioning with the, the repositioning of their units from federal to local is now officially completed. And then the Commission on Disability has asked that there be a closer relationship with the town ADA coordinator going forward, and that they can be of much more use and helpful if they are included in major projects for the town prior or as they get off the ground as opposed to after the fact.
Okay. Carrie, do you want to go next?
I attended the Acton Concord Regional Emergency Center Transportation Advisory Committee, and today I attended a 222 Main Street Committee, and they are going to be sending a letter to the Select Board following up on some of our questions about risk and scientific analysis.
And I've tentatively scheduled June 13th for a discussion of that topic. So that's, that's.
Okay, I'll let them know that.
I hope that we can take that up. And I think that we should also invite the former co-chairs of the NMI StarMet Committee that was disbanded.
Right, Gary Kleiman was at that meeting today, right?
Okay, yeah. And Paul Bohm.
Yeah, they may be ready, they may not.
So, okay, so if you, if you feel that June 13th won't work, get back to me.
I think it probably will work because they're going to go over their letter again on June 6th at their next meeting. So I'll, I'll let them know.
All right, thanks. Henry, do you have any?
The Executive Committee for the 250th had its first meeting last Thursday. It was very, very productive. We have very thorough minutes, which I, I will provide to, to this, to our committee.
I attended the School Committee Meeting on May 10th, very large turnout. Alexa Anderson is now the Concord Public Schools Committee Chairman, with Carrie Rankin as the Vice Chair. There was, this was also the final meeting for Jared Stanton, who's leaving for another position outside of Concord. position outside of Concord. That there also was an extensive discussion of adding a non-voting Metco School Committee member to the regional district. That was just held as its first reading, there will be further discussions. There's going to be a new budget estimate provided for the middle school project soon. And then, on May 12th, there was another school committee meeting where Tracy Morano was elected the, the Concord Carlisle Regional School District Chair, and the newly elected member from Carlisle, Sharon Witt, was elected vice chair. And Sharon was also appointed to the DEI Strategic Plan Committee in, subcommittee in place of Court Ruth. Then, contract negotiations were also concluded amicably with the tutors, so that's all said. That's a standard part of the project, so there, there are periodic re, you know, estimates of budget as the project continues. Nothing, no, no. So, we just get a continuous refinement, you know, as, as more is known, yeah.
Right, it never goes down.
Well, we'll find out.
And you will.
Find out. So, Linda?
Man, I failed to mention, I did go to a couple other committees, committee meetings during the week, but I failed to mention to encourage everyone to fill out the housing production plan if they haven't already done so, and they can find that online.
I, I attended a focus group on that a while back. Okay.
That actually reminds me that I, I would like to recommend that we have a liaison for that housing-
Production Plan Steering Committee. So, I, I think that Mary just had a couple things taken away last time. She's full. Sorry, no, you have 12 items, that's right, I'm mistaking.
Yeah, I have a big, heavy list.
I'll do it.
So, please do it, Terry, that'd be great. So-
Oh, sorry, you're right.
Okay.
I said I'm full.
So, then, in terms of-
And mute.
Correspondence, let's see, I'm trying to think, we, I think I have one letter in the packet, did we?
Right, we had one letter.
One letter in the packet, so it's for the Concord Business Partnership, which is encouraging the hiring of an Economic Development Director.
Exactly.
Okay, and we did receive further correspondence today that would be in next week's packet. Then, we are now ready to ask whether there's any public comment. If so, please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
I'm seeing anyone.
I'm not seeing anyone, so I believe now we're ready to move to executive session. So, this is an executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real property, because I-
Do we need to adjourn, but not to-
I'll get to that. I'm declaring as chair that an open meeting about this issue would potentially have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and so we would enter this executive session and not return to open session.
Okay, move to enter into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, not to return to regular session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we need a roll call vote for this, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Does it remember who we are?
I'm trying to think alphabetical order.
You don't have to do it alphabetically, just do left or right.
Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hartman.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Terry Ackerman, aye.
Okay, so we will now be concluding the open session, entering executive session, and we will not be returning to public session. Thank you all who have attended.